City Council will come to order. Sue, please call the roll.
Adams.
Here.
Leonard. Saltzman.
Here.
Stan. Potter.
Here. Please read item 617.
Accept Report of the Fire and Police Disability and Retirement Reform Committee.
Mr. Saltzman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In January of this year, the resolution we passed which created the Reform Committee, in that same resolution, the council also unanimously agreed that we would refer charter amendments to the voters for the November general election encompassing the concepts presented by the Reform Committee. I'm grateful that the Reform Committee has completed its work in such a timely manner to allow myself and my colleagues here time to meet that timeline. And now I'd like to have Shannon Callahan, who is on my staff, give a brief summary of the committee's work. Shannon was also the facilitator of the Reform Committee.
Hi, I am Shannon Callahan, and I did propose to the Fire and Police and Retirement Reform Committee. On behalf of the committee, I would prepare a brief summary of the committee's work. But before I begin, I'd like to give a little bit of background on the creation of the committee. In February of 2005, the council created the Independent Review Committee, the IRC, to oversee a comprehensive analysis of the city's fire and police disability and retirement system, FPDNR. In December of 2005, the IRC presented its findings to council. Council conducted three work sessions regarding potential reforms to the FPDNR system and resolved to create the Reform Committee. The committee consisted of 16 individual members, including citizen representatives, members of the FPDNR Board of Trustees, staff members from each of the council offices, the Portland City Auditor, and members of the police and fire associations. The committee met 12 times encompassing approximately 24 hours of discussion in addition to numerous hours reviewing information and preparation for the committee's work. Every member of the committee actively engaged in the discussions and worked together collaboratively to present these concepts and this report to council. An important basis for the committee's work was the collaborative consensus model the committee developed for itself. The committee defined consensus as not necessarily being the particular ideal of any individual member, but concepts that all members of the committee would live with within the particular areas they were assigned to work by council. Thus, the committee today presents approaches to address comprehensive reforms to both the pension and disability systems for council's further discussion. In preparing these approaches for council, the committee gathered additional information, as well as addressed and talked through previously unaddressed issues to present informed options for council's consideration. In regards to the pension system, the committee's guiding principle for pension reforms was that they need to be both fiscally responsible and fair to public safety officers. The committee submits that the pension system for new hires should be prefunded. The city of Portland is currently facing an unfunded liability of $1.64 billion. Absentee changes this liability is expected to grow to $8 billion in 40 years' time. Prefunding the pensions for new hires would provide a more fiscally responsible pension system. The committee, however, does not recommend that the pensions of existing FPDNR members are prefunded, as it is too costly from the perspective of the taxpayer. In addition, the committee recommends that all current members of the FPDNR pension system should retain their current benefits. As to the specific pension system for new hires, the committee does not have a specific recommendation, but submits the following information to council. The committee believes that moving all new hires into the PERS OPSERP pension system would provide significant savings to the taxpayer over time. However, the PERS OPSERP pension system poses an element of risk to beneficiaries that does not currently exist in the FPDNR pension system. As to the inclusion of social security, if OPSERP were the pension system for new hires going forward, the committee does not believe that social security is a good financial option to either the taxpayer or the beneficiaries. The committee believes a better financial option would be to make a contribution to the individual account portion of the OPSERP program. In regards to the disability system, the committee recommends, first, that a provision allowing for subrogation be added to the charter. Subrogation would allow the FPDNR system to collect third-party insurance claims and result in decreased cost to the disability system. Secondly, the committee believes that having light-duty positions available for injured officers is essential to reducing disability costs. In addition, the committee believes that financial incentives for both the fire and police bureaus should be in place to reduce their costs. The committee believes this can be accomplished through intergovernmental agreements, through the FPDNR funds and the bureaus. As to the specifics of the disability system, the committee is forwarding to council two approaches for making necessary reforms. One approach is using the state workers' compensation system and making a few additions, the Workers' Compensation Plus package. The second approach is to substantially reform the current FPDNR disability system. The committee designed the Workers' Compensation Plus package to recognize those occupational illnesses unique to firefighters and police officers that are part of the current FPDNR system. Additionally, the committee would increase the level of pay under the workers' compensation system from 66% to 75% of the weekly base pay, under conditions similar to those as in the current charter. An alternative approach as offered by the committee is to substantially reform the current FPDNR disability system. The prototype the committee developed removes the Board of Trustees from making decisions in the claims-making process, as well, it makes substantial changes in the membership of the Board of Trustees. Currently, the FPDNR Board is the first decision-maker in the disability claims process. In the reformed model, an independent expert in disability claims management would be the first decision-maker using FPDNR rules. The claims process for the revised FPDNR disability system is compared to the current disability decision-making process on page 14 of the committee's report. This approach also would include changes to the membership of the Board of Trustees. Currently, the Board of Trustees encompasses 11 members. The committee recommends changing this to a five-member board. This revised board would include two citizens who are experts in the field of disability and/or pension systems. Neither of these two members would be a beneficiary of the system or past or present employee of the fire or police bureaus. These two members would be appointed by the mayor and subject to the approval of council. One member would represent the fire members of the system. Another member would represent the police members of the system. The fifth member of the board would be a representative of the city. The committee felt that the council should decide who this fifth member should be, but the committee submits that the member should either be the mayor or the mayor's representative or a named member of the city's management team. However, the committee felt that this member should not be a beneficiary of the system, nor a past or present employee of the police or fire bureaus. City staff is currently working to provide additional fiscal analysis on these approaches and recommendations as contained in the report. Presently, a council work session on FPDNR reforms is scheduled for May 23, followed by a public hearing on May 31. Thank you.
Questions from the commissioners?
It was unanimous?
We were not a voting committee. We used a consensus model. So, as explained in the beginning, all members defined that as being not necessarily their particular ideal, but concepts that they could live with. So, only, there were a lot of things that were discussed in addition to what's being forwarded in this report, but only those things that we could reach consensus on under that definition are being forwarded to council.
Thanks.
Thank you. I just want to clarify a few things for the folks in the room. Is that the purpose of today's council hearing is to receive the report. We will be taking no public comment because we will be having specific times later for that to occur. On May 31, there will be a council work session on May 23. What we did, however, do is provide for the committee members who wish to make statements that they can. So, two that have signed up are Charles Rosenthal and Eva Schwaber. Would you please come forward?
I'm not evil.
That's probably a good thing, Charlie.
For her. My name is Charles Rosenthal. I've been a member of the 1999-2000 FPDNR Charter Review Committee, the 2006 Reform Committee, the FPDNR Board of Trustees since July of 2001. I appreciate the council's attention to the flaws in the FPDNR statutes and rules. I eagerly look for council's corrections to provide fair, equitable, and secure pensions and disability support for our firefighters and police officers. This is achievable within the same economic constraints that the rest of the city lives with. I support the Reform Committee's report because it presents timely and realistic options for council action. Further, the participation of the mayors and the commissioners' staff has brought to council many more ideas and options for consideration, options that did not receive committee consensus approval, but you've heard about them, I hope, by this time. I will address two options which are in the latter category or were not discussed in depth by the committee. Number one, the new disability system and its administration, whether it's workers' comp or the prototype, should be controlled by the council, as are other city entities. First, the current independent budget and expenditures process must be changed to place FPDNR in the common budget-cost loop, not independent of it. Second, council and the FPDR Board must have means for improving, tuning, and responding to experience and changing conditions. The long delays and awkwardness of charter change are not hallmarks of top-notch management. Charter language should permit flexibility, and constraining language should be minimized. Number two, the administration of the new FPDR disability system should be in an organization experienced in disability and rehabilitation activities and capable of absorbing the excellent FPDNR staff. It should also be able to provide services both special to fire and police and within the environment cognizant of treatment of other city employees. So, it shouldn't be an entirely unique organization. Number three, this option that I bring before you is a departure from my Reform Committee colleagues. Our report describes a board for the prototype system which is suggested to have one firefighter, one police officer, selected by union members, two citizens, and one city representative. I have no difficulty predicting that the union people will be strong advocates for their members. Must remember that they sleep in the same station houses, they ride in the same patrol cars, they know one another's families. It is impossible to believe that they can be unbiased. They'd be inhuman if they weren't biased, based on their joint experiences. So, I strongly suggest a larger board with two more citizen members to counterbalance the effects of the union members. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Eva Schwaber here?
I'm Eva Schwaber, and in the past year, I have served on two committees that have closely examined Portland's fire, police, disability, and retirement system, as well as having attended the vast majority of the Independent Reviews Committee's meetings. The details of the system's flaws can be complex and arcane, but as you, as all the reports indicate, the systems have huge implications not for the benefit, just for the beneficiaries, but for the well-being of the city of Portland. Reform of both the disability and pension components of FPDNR is critical, but there is also a great need to clarify the city charter about the basis upon which the FPDNR levy is assessed. The city charter refers to the levy being assessed at the same time and in the same manner that other taxes are levied. Prior to the passage of Measure 50, this language was adequate. However, now that property taxes are assessed either on assessed value or real market value, the ambiguous language leaves the city vulnerable to dire consequences, including having the FPDNR unfunded liability fully compress all serial levies, or even having to use the city's general fund to pay pensions for retired police officers and firefighters rather than the salaries of current employees. In fiscal year 2004-2005, FPDNR's levy rate was $1.46 per $1,000 of real market value and $2.25 per $1,000 of assessed value. Prefunding the FPDNR system will require a temporary increase in the levy in order to both pre-fund new hires as well as continue to pay-as-you-go for FPDNR beneficiaries. The working assumption is that the FPDNR levy is based on real market value, but this has not been tested in a court of law. The members of the City Club of Portland recommend making the city charter explicit that the full 2.8 mils of the FPDNR levy be assessed on real market value. This is a simple housekeeping issue, but it is an issue that left unaddressed exposes Portland to great financial risk. I commend the council for taking on the politically challenging task of reforming the FPDNR system. You have now heard from three committees, committees that included citizens at large, as well as fund beneficiaries and experts in the field of human resources. We now look to you to take action. None of these issues are new, but I argue that now before you have a roadmap to reform that must be followed, as the elected leadership of the city of Portland, it is incumbent upon you to find the balance point between the stewardship of public resources and protecting our public safety employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other members of the Reform Committee who wish to make a statement? Please come forward, and Gary, please come up with him.
I'm Jeff Furnish. I'm the chair of the, the former chair of the Independent Review Committee. I also served on the Transition Committee. I agree with many of the comments that have been made by the prior two speakers. As you know, this program has been the subject of many prior studies. The IRC and the city's Transition Committee have come much farther than any of these prior efforts. The package at this point may well be at a point where every accountant in the city of Portland would vote for it, but for all the voters to support it will take dedication on the part of the council to craft an explainable package and to keep it in front of the citizens until the November elections. I originally became involved in this effort because of my concern about the unfunded liability and its potential impacts on the city, and I agree with the editorial staff of the Oregonian. They made a comment last winter that this is the most important thing the city council will do this year. I want to do a focus on three specific issues that I think are left open in the Transition Committee's report. First of all, on the question of the structure of the board, I think progress has been made on, in referring a prototype to you. As you know, the, the structure of the existing board must change, for one thing, and perhaps Gary will comment on this. My understanding is that the city auditor believes it's a conflict for him to continue to serve on the board. So, for that reason alone, there must be some restructuring of the board. As has been mentioned, the recommended prototype downsizes the board, it reduces its role, and it guarantees that a majority of the board members would be non-beneficiaries. These last two elements are key. I think claims adjudication should be done by technical experts and not involve the board. And if the board's role is expanded beyond the recommendation, then it should be a completely independent board, that is, no beneficiary should serve on the board. The second issue I want to discuss was workers' compensation. We've very recently had a memo from the city attorney indicating some concerns if the structure going forward was that all future claims were placed under the workers' compensation system. I must say that I'm disappointed to see this opinion at this late date. The IRC was clear in its questions in this area to the city attorney, and the IRC got different answers on this. However, if the latest opinion is the one that's relied on, I'd suggest that the voters be asked to approve charter language placing all new hires into OPSERP and workers' compensation. I believe this will raise many fewer legal issues than the future claims approach that the city attorney has concerns about. I think it would also be acceptable for the new hires to have a workers' compensation plus benefit package, but I think it's critical that whatever package is adopted, administration should follow the state workers' compensation model. The third issue I want to talk about was to find contribution benefits. In this process, again, I think has been mentioned by the prior speakers, the unions have had basically one mode of operation, and that is to constantly bargain for benefit improvements, even though neither the IRC or the committee was a bargaining environment. The IRC and this committee have been able to craft a package that provides equivalent or better retirement benefits to new hires while prefunding their benefits, and everyone agrees that prefunding must occur going forward. Yet, the unions request that an additional contribution be made to OPSERP on their behalf. Essentially, as this system matures, each 1% of contribution granted would cost the taxpayers $1 million per year in today's dollars. Now, the unions have advanced various arguments for this additional benefit, including their lack of coverage under social security. But as you've heard, everyone agrees that social security coverage for new Security coverage for new hires would not be a good expenditure of either the city's or the employees' money, and would cost each group, that is, the city or the employees, each group, more than what is delivered in total benefits. I urge the council to recognize the necessity of change in this program with taxpayer support, and to consider the economic impact on the taxpayers before agreeing to any additional contributions on behalf of the public safety members. Thank you very much.
Can we ask a question, Chair?
I'm unclear, Jeff, about the contribution. Are you talking about the, what would normally be called the pickup, or the employees' contribution?
No, I think the recommendation is that the, that that contribution be covered, but the union representatives have asked that beyond that, there is a portion of OPSERP, known as the IAP, the Individual Account Program, where there be an additional percentage contribution on behalf of the members to that program. In fact, I believe in the report they indicate that, that's a required basis of their support of the consensus recommendations that you're receiving. My point is that the, the, without making any additional contributions, the analysis by the outside experts has shown that the new members will receive an equal or better income replacement at retirement under the package without any additional contributions. Given that we are asking the taxpayers to step up for additional funding and to pre-fund these benefits, I'm just, I'm just asking you to consider that fact, because bargaining will continue, that you consider that fact before making any additional financial commitments to the taxpayers.
Thank you.
I did want to talk about the independence issue, which is what in the audit field --
Gary, could you?
I'm sorry. Gary Blackmer, Portland City Auditor. Independence is the phrase that auditors use in talking about potential conflicts of interest. The idea of any appearance of a conflict of interest is really of utmost concern to them, and those standards have gotten increasingly more stringent, especially Arthur Andersen was a great example of an organization that was not only auditing, but it was recommending to management practices that it should undertake, and ultimately auditing those practices. So, that was a major violation of independence, and audit standards have changed. Needless to say, they've changed since 1946, when my office became responsible for administering the Fire and Police Disability and Retirement Fund, but they've gotten much more stringent from that standpoint. From the standpoint of what I think is important in, in the recommendations that came forward and the committee provided them in the report, was that there are three hats that I wear related to Fire and Police Disability and Retirement Fund that are all violations of audit standards. Number one, I am a trustee and I have a vote on the board, and so I'm involved in policy setting and decisions. Number two, the administration of it is in my office. That doesn't mean that my office sets policy, but Babette Heffely, the administrator and I, work regularly on a variety of issues related to the daily operations in the office. And number three, as the administrator, I have a shared higher fire decision on that administrator position with the rest of the board. All three of those are violations of the audit standards as they're now stated. So, I had recommended that it be removed from my office so that I could conduct audits in accordance with audit standards of the Fire and Police Fund. I think that's the best use of my office, and it's one of the recommendations that the city club came out with was that it needed to have independent audits. My office can do that if it were not administering the staff and participating in the votes on various decisions. I want to say that the staff is excellent, professional, Babette Heffely is a real extremely qualified, highly professional leader, and I respect her a great deal, and I think they all carry very important values when they're conducting their work, and I'd hate to lose them as part of my team, but on the other hand, I recognize the importance of public accountability, and that's at the bottom what I can best do to serve the public. In terms of what you face with the decisions before you, I think all of the key issues that I saw as a trustee came forward in the two groups that have studied this and brought forward information, and I think it's, you, you have a lot of options, and they've been laid out and analyzed, and so ultimately, the decision before you is difficult, but it's also one that I think they've explored what the options are, the consequences, the benefits, and disadvantages. So, I think you're in a good position to make decisions, so, thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the committee? Do any of the commissioners wish to make a statement before we conclude?
Well, I wanted to thank some people. I want to express my gratitude to every member of the Reform Committee for all your hard work and tireless devotion to this important issue. I want to particularly thank Charlie Rosenthal, the citizen member of the current Board of Trustees, for his work on this committee and on the board, Jeff Furnish, who chaired the Independent Review Committee, Judy Clark, who also co-chaired the Independent Review Committee, Judy Rice, who has now been a member of three committees that have studied FPDNR reforms, Eva Schwaber, author of the City Club Report, and Jack Finders of the Portland Firefighters Association, Bob Lemon of the Firefighters Association, and a member of the Board of Trustees, Captain Mike Reese of the Portland Police Commanding Officers, Robert King of the Portland Police Association, Mark Chamberlain of the Portland Police Association, Gary Blackmer, our city auditor, a member of the Board of Trustees, Austin Raglione from the mayor's office, Mary Jo Markle with Commissioner Adams' office, Sarah Petracini with Commissioner Leonard's office, Rich Rogers of Commissioner Sten's office, and then my own chief of staff, Brendan Finn, and Babette Heffely as well, and Shannon Callahan, who has facilitated this process. I think the work product we have today is a good one, and I believe it will serve as the basis of the reforms to the FPDNR system, and the options and approaches are presented are well thought out and thoroughly researched. So, I want to thank all of you again.
Thank you. Council is adjourned until 6:30 PM tonight. We're meeting on the city budget at Metropolitan Learning Center's auditorium at 2033 Northwest Gleason. We're adjourned.
Excuse me, Mayor, do we need to take a vote accepting the report?
Oh, excuse me. Then, we're unadjourned. Do we need to call the roll?
Just take a roll. Adams?
Here.
Leonard?
Well, I wasn't going to say anything, but since we're going to vote, this was a very important process.
I thought this was the roll.
This is just the roll call.
The vote, actually.
Would you like to comment on the roll?
Oh, it's the vote.
We're actually voting.
Oh, it's the vote?
Accepting the report.
Okay.
Okay, I said here. I thought we were calling the roll again.
That's what I thought, Sam. Some of us weren't paying attention.
So, I voted here.
Safe vote.
That's a pretty safe vote. Subject to debate. I'm sure, what, what do I do? What can I do? I heard that we had to take roll again, so I voted here.
Don't we need a motion, and thus, someone makes the motion and we second it?
The, the agenda item before you is to accept the report. I don't, I think you can just go ahead and vote on accepting the report.
Can I vote then?
Yes, you can vote.
Okay, thank you.
We've been waiting for you to vote.
I too want to thank everyone involved, and I want you to know that I will take the work very seriously and dig into it very deeply. I'm sure I will have to have some individual conversations with a number of folks that have worked on this, and I too want to thank Mary Jo Markle, who's leaving on a three-month vacation and a number of days, but who has attended almost all the meetings and done a good job of representing me on, on this group, and at the same time, representing the group's work back to our office. So, I'm very happy to vote aye.
Leonard?
Well, I've actually talked to Mary Jo Markle. She's not leaving on a vacation. She's going down to work in the South to help people, and--
Did I say vacation?
Yes, you did, and she's doing anything but taking a vacation.
Sabbatical.
I actually appreciate the work she's going to do for fellow citizens. But, as I was saying, this is, this has been a very important process, and I think it has been somewhat tempered by the reality that it's one thing to emotionally pass something that you think goes after what you may want to have happen versus having the voters actually accept it. And my focus throughout this process is not just for us to adopt something that makes people feel better, but actually to adopt something that has a chance of the voters passing, which in my political experience is what really counts at the end of the day. And I think we have taken a huge step in that direction, and I'm satisfied that we are moving ahead a process to reform a system that has all the important players onboard, without which, any one of which, and I don't mean to identify just any particular component of this process, but any one of which was not onboard this process, in my opinion, spells doom for the voters, for any hope of the voters approving this change. So, up to this point, as we accept this report, I am comfortable that we are laying the groundwork to do the really hard work, which is, after the council adopts something, to make the case to the voters to pass it. That is going to be hard, is, I mean, we may all accept that easily, we may see the wisdom of that, the voters will see a tax increase. We need to explain to them why this is important, why it's important for the future of our city, why it's important for the fiscal stability of our city, and hopefully have all our partners onboard helping us fund that message. That is a key ingredient to success. So, I too appreciate this hard work and am happy to vote aye.
Salzman?
Aye.
Sten?
Well, I agree, and I want to thank everybody for your perseverance. I think we are close to a package. There's still a couple of key choices that have to be made, and my concerns in January were very similar to Commissioner Leonard's, that we were not ready to take this out, and we needed to keep working, and I think we have a little flurry of work still to do here, there's a couple of questions remaining, but I think we're very close to something that, that will pass, hopefully, and I think will make everybody proud, so you should all be proud of the work you've done, and I look forward to working with you on the next step. Aye.
Potter?
I certainly appreciate the work of the committee, each and every one of them. You know, I guess the only point I disagree with Randy is, I'm just not sure that it's going to cost the taxpayers, because one of the things that I would like to see is the difference between what the increased cost for the pension side is versus the decreased cost for the disability side. It could even out, it could cost somewhat more, but I think one will tend to offset the other. And so, I'm interested to find out what those numbers are, so we can look at that, and I think that that will help us then in terms of going out to the community and, and having this discussion with the larger community. A vote aye. Now, we are adjourned until 6:30 PM tonight.
This time, you mean it.
And this time, I mean it.